We'll call Danielle, please.
Vice Mayor Peters.
Here.
Councilman Gray.
Here.
Councilwoman Gray.
Here.
Councilwoman Knappel.
Here.
Councilman Penny.
All the president of the county for.
Councilman Warren. City Attorney Griffin.
Here.
First item on the agenda is the approval for the minutes for the July 11th meeting.
I'm like the motion to approve.
All in favor? Any opposed? Next one's consideration of non-emergency invoices over $10,000.
You have a report before you coming off our U system. All of them are familiar with you, to you, with the exception of the air and construction. 10,700, that was two separate projects. So we wrote one check, technically we should have written one check for each project. But together.
Just for the sake, knowing, what were they for?
That was for the vinyl siding and stuff down by the pool, the new siding. That was put down the buildings down there. And a new roof. And a new roof over the pump. Chemical room.
And then the Lonnie Cobb Ford was, we budgeted for one new vehicle this year. Chief went ahead and got that.
And just to let y'all know, that was very lucky, because if not, if we wouldn't have got that one, it would probably have been about 18 months before we got one. Just so happens the department that ordered it, they put the wrong thing for light bar and it shouldn't have. So it just came out lucky for us.
There was one more. The next page, there's two pages, one that hurt for us for the zero. Is that on de-watering solutions, speaking at 1,778? Rusty keeps speaking too, a little bit later, but that was the pump that we'd ordered way back in the prior year. They finally got the work done on that, so that one was in the budget as well.
And they approved the bid.
So all these are within the budget, nothing outside of the budget, they need any trial? Need a motion to approve? Or they're just letting us know?
We're just letting you know, because you've already approved them, basically, but we want to keep you abreast of what the money and words.
Consideration of non-emergency invoice, I just didn't know if that was, like, if we're considering it or if that's just telling.
We can do it however y'all want, we can vote on it, or we can just, I mean, there's not a vote necessary because it's been approved. We're just letting you know, we did spend this money. I know it says consideration for approval, but that's if we get one, like, let's say a pump goes out and we have to spend $75,000. We have to get your approval to spend it outside of what's been.
Then you're just letting us know that the money was spent?
Right, but on that, you'd have to approve it because it wasn't in the budget. It goes under the same line item, does that make sense?
I guess, I just, if it's inside the budget and we spent the money, I don't know, I just don't, not a big deal, I'm not trying to take up extra time with it.
This is an increased transparency.
Yeah, we're just trying to let you know, every dollar that's being spent.
Fair enough.
Alright, next item on the agenda is citizens' concerns. We have no one here to speak. Next item's gonna be my report. The first thing is the update on the rehabilitation of this building. Evan White will be here next month to give you all the figures y'all asked for, for the rewiring, removal of the mold, tear down, remodel of this building. He'll be here next month to give you the complete rundown of what everything would cost, whichever duration y'all decided y'all want to go.
I understand you're talking tearing it down, or?
Remodel, either one.
Okay.
He's gonna have both different, whatever you guys decide to do, if you decide to even do that.
Okay.
It'll have, just doing the remodel of the wiring and excavation of the mold and the.
He couldn't do it this month? He wasn't able to make?
No, he wasn't able to, go ahead Scott.
The mayor was out, but so we would certainly notice detail, that we said all options. What could we do with this property, including those two options? And so the architect also told us, this is what's a matter to you, the codes and zoning and everything that you can do with this property.
Might be wise to, I know not everybody wants to do this probably, but have a special call whenever, like, as soon as that he could do it. So what we're gonna mess around and hack is, we're gonna get to November, it's gonna be a new council and it's all just gonna start over again.
So you wanna have a special call?
I think so.
Does everybody agree on that?
He's not gonna be ready.
Yeah, he.
He won't be ready before the next meeting.
He's consulting with the architect group about it all, so their plan, yeah.
So what we could possibly do is maybe do it a five o'clock before the meeting and have him brief y'all. And then if y'all want to vote on it during the meeting, able to right then, you can vote on it right then, is that, is that okay with everyone?
Seems like when we have these special call meetings, we allow an hour. We usually use up about 15 to 20 minutes, it would make it 5:30.
I don't think that's gonna be the case this.
Well, this is a little different, because you got like three or four different options and different amounts of money.
A lot of information.
That's a good point though.
I agree.
I should have.
No, I mean, I don't mind to do it however you want to do it. So five o'clock on the third, we're gonna go over that. Okay. The next item on there is Public Entity Partners has grant money that we.
You said the third? I mean, the fifth?
Is that the first Thursday?
I'm just making sure I'm putting it in right. Thursday is the fifth?
Yes, you're correct. We're going to ask to. We're gonna ask to have security cameras put up at the new basketball sites and new cameras put up down there at the park. But Public Entity Partners has a, some grant money available, so when we do that, I'd like y'all to let me apply for that grant also. Because it could pay for the entire project, but we can get anywhere from two to $10,000.
Motion to.
Well, there's another agenda item on that. I'm just going over that, the grant part's not in there, but I want y'all to.
But you can apply for it, that's what I was saying.
Yes. And I don't know if y'all noticed it or not, but we replaced all the trash cans around the city. The trash can receptacles are all brand new, ones that were falling down, broke. And I'm gonna give you a report from the water department, because he's not here tonight. They started Hull Avenue, the new water line on July 17th. They started at College Avenue, they've worked a total of nine days. With a four man crew, they've installed 464 feet of brand new water line. Six inch water line, and they also set a one six inch fire hydrant in that process. They're approximately 300 feet from finishing the first installation of the first set of the project. So they're only 300 feet away from their goal for the first phase of this project. And then I asked them to give me a total cost, they said, as total cost in-house to date is $17,831. Contractor cost $85,840. So total savings of $68,008. So that's what they've done so far, just that little bit, that little short period of time. And I think that's all I've got, I do need to add an item to the agenda. It's in reference to, Scott, remind me with that, what? We talked about, I've got a lot going on in my head, but it needs to be brought up today over the bank erosion project. I need to add that to the agenda to talk about that and make sure we get a final vote on that.
It sits down at the water treatment plant?
Yes, it is, and we're getting ready to sign some papers on the 23rd, so I want to make sure everybody still understands how much it is, what we've gotta do and everything else, so I want to add that to the agenda, if you don't care.
You want to put it on the unfinished with the?
I mean, basically, if you have unfinished, if you don't care, we do it first.
Do a motion to make it the first item on unfinished business?
All in favor? Any opposed? Alright. Next item on the agenda is going to be. We've got.
At the same time.
We've got committee reports, and we're gonna start with the streets department tonight, go ahead and give your report.
We, we saved money by, we patched 10 holes. The contractor charged us $70,000 to patch them 10 holes. We could cost us $600 to patch. Do the same thing there.
And that paid for the, the equipment we bought to do the patching.
The ventilators and everything.
Rusty, if you want to go next? Yeah?
Y'all know I've been talking about the Aduver pumps and stuff for a couple of years now, and this will tie into what Scott told you about the $59,000. We have, at the plant, we have three high service pumps that move our water from the plant to the tank, or to the city. We have one large pump, 100 horsepower, and we have two 60 horsepower motors. We can either run the big pump, or we can run both of the smaller pumps, or one of the smaller pumps, whatever the need is for that particular day. The $59,000 that Scott was talking about, we replaced those two smaller pumps. Supposed to have been done in last year fiscal year, but due to problems, it overran into early July. Those pumps are now installed, working great, we're happy with everything. The pump that, the other large pump that I had, however, just so that y'all know, three weeks after we got these pumps up and running, it blew up. So there will be some discussion about moving forward with fixing that. I am required to have redundancy in my pumping system, so I'll be, I can't let it slide, so I've got to act on it. I estimate, based on the smaller pumps, I estimate the cost for that one pump alone will probably be in the neighborhood of 40 to 50,000, because it's a bigger pump. That being said, we also have a raw water intake pump at the river that's down now too. And it's one of our newer pumps, it was actually installed about seven years ago when Jerry Warren done the upgrades here. It will also have to be replaced, because I'm required to have the same redundancy down there. I'll have to, I've got to start the process of getting quotes and stuff like that, I just want to make y'all aware, give y'all a report of what's going on now. We didn't, we didn't foresee this coming, so we need a budget for it, so we'll have to discuss this as we go.
Be a budget amendment that we'll have to do.
So it's maybe worth looking into, I don't know. But at my house, whenever we have something, especially a major mechanical type thing, we usually have something on standby. So that when that one goes out, you've got something.
Give me like buy an additional pump to have.
Just saying. So it may be worth us looking into, so that we're replacing our replacements rather than our working pumps. I think that's common sense, but within the budget, we'd be able to, we have enough wiggle room in there to not only buy what you've got, what you need now, but for the next one that, when that one goes out.
We don't have anything budget near that amount, but.
We gotta be more forward thinking about that.
Well, we were forward thinking on the two smaller pumps. Those pumps, the old pumps were up and running still, they were just getting to that vibrating stage where you know it can be any day. So we went ahead and worked on that for months, and finally got that done. I did not foresee this other one breaking right away though. And it happened overnight, of course, that's when it happened. And the motor, the motor and shaft, everything's running good, something is broke below in the pump itself where we can't see. So we have to pull it just to even diagnose what the problem is, and more than likely, it's destroyed itself underwater.
But even if it's not inside their budget, we could still use.
We can make an amendment to purchase that.
And if we just had it sitting on the shelf, if it lasts 10 years and it just sits there, I mean, I don't know how long it lasts.
Ideally, it'll last longer than that. I mean, the pump that's there has been there since I've been here, and I've been here 14 years, so.
That's what I was gonna ask, what's the life of it?
Well, it's hard to, it's hard to say, because there's so many variables. See, we, we run, we run variable speed drives on all of our pumps, which allows us to cut the frequency up or down and control the speed, how much water we move. Anytime there's a, it's a permanent installation, a solid installation, and you change frequency on a motor, you, you introduce harmonic vibrations and things, and that can have detrimental effects to the setup, and you won't know it until it breaks out. So it's hard for me to predict the lifespan, but yes, we expect, you know, 10 years or better out of them, I mean, you would hope.
What is, what is the cost of one of those pumps?
Well, that particular, the two smaller pumps worked out to about 30,000 apiece. We replaced two, not one, two.
What we may be able to do, Jesse, if you agree with this, is maybe put a fund in place that is already budgeted in case it does go out, we don't have to have numbers purchased.
Yes, not necessarily, it's not necessary to have something sit on the shelf for 10 years, that, that seems silly, but to have the money ready for what happens, that makes a lot of sense.
I think a fund, I think a fund set aside five square sides would be great, and the reason, that would give it some versatility, because we have four different pump sizes in the, between intake and clean water. We have the, the shaft length on the ones at the plant is just over 17 feet down. The shaft length at the river is over 54 feet down. So it's considerably different setup and design. So a fund though, that could replace a couple of those that are already sitting there waiting and already approved, we wouldn't have to come before you to ask you to let us spend that money.
You're handling it in-house, really.
Basically, but we'd have to get with Scott to see how we'd work that out.
I was gonna say, it sounds like you've got about 10, a decade or so of building that fund up before you're gonna go.
Yeah, just don't put 40,000, let the citizens put.
Five, 10, whatever.
Build it up, yeah.
Every year we budget, what have we been budgeting, Scott, about 50,000 for pumps, for pumps and repairs and stuff?
So it's already basically there.
But one pump will just about eat that up. So the thing is, we're not gonna have the money to set aside for future stuff. You hear everything that's done, we're gonna be doing all we can do to stay going in the larger. Just, I just want to make y'all aware of where we're at today. And that this is not a whim that I don't want to just replace these, this is required.
Steve, you ready for your report?
Yes, sir, I guess I'll start up here. I'm more comfortable with the wastewater plant than I am publicly speaking, so maybe that's just too bad, but. I didn't want to bring y'all up to date on kind of what's been going on in the wastewater plant lately, and I may read part of this, but last October, we applied for a new five year discharge permit, and we got it, it went into effect May 1st. And it expires April 30th, 2029, so we're good for the next five years. We submitted for a new five year bio-solid land permit on May 8th. And we got an email today, they're gonna have a public hearing September 13th, and we should have the new permit September 20th. That'll be good for five years. We just completed and re-submitted our five year DMR QAQC, which keeps our laboratory certified EPA. So basically, all the permit tests we do at the lab every day, were proven that we're capable of doing it. We'll get the EPA results on September 13th. They send them to an independent lab, they compile them to what we did in-house, and we expect to be good on that. We had our compliance inspection evaluation from the corporate field office due in the 10th, and we've got a real good inspection report from TDEC. And later this year, we're looking forward to TOSHA coming to the plant doing the safety and hazards, so we have a lot of inspection. Lift station reports, we pretty much kind of wore on the lift stations, that we need help, bless Derek and Roger, they all help us when we need help. Turner Farm and Hardee's, we haven't any issues this year so far. Hardee's, we put new pumps in, probably three or above, Turner Farm put in new valves, we put in a new telemetry. The main lift station, we did replace new starters and overloads. The pumps were good, but the starters overload were for the old pumps, so we replaced them. Radio station, we've had more problem there than anywhere. The cooling unit that cools that panel up there, y'all see it sets up on that tile work out as you're going toward Walmart. The cooling unit went out, and you would think, well, that can't cost much, a little cooling unit for that, it was over $6,000 for that cooling unit. But when the days are this hot, and you've got all them electrical components in there, you've got to keep it cold. Number two pump, we've had a lot of trouble with, they took it out, rebuilt a few things, right now it's down with a heat overload. Post come maybe in a while. But that's pretty much lift stations, we'll get into the plant report real quick. Did y'all get one of these in your pocket last time? Did anybody look at it, the pretty picture that was in there? We got a three page, or, and what's happened is.
Steve, can I say something?
Yes.
What that is, is they, TDEC's come down and interviewed those guys, because they're on the leading edge of trying something new that's gonna possibly be implemented throughout the whole state, and our plan is once it came up with this idea, so they, they thinking outside the box.
It's bottlenecked, since I've been there, getting rid of the bio-solage, you know, every winter, we say, well, we can't haul them off, cause the field's wet. July, we ain't been able to haul because it rained every day. So me and Ricky and Stephen, we sat down and we tried to look at using our resources, what we had there. And how can we come up with an alternative plan? Not have everything in buckets. What we come up with is, there was always some old drying beds on the back end towards sound. So first thing we did, now we had to put a valve in, and when we got the valve put in, we found that the flood line had been broken too, so we had to get the excavator and dig, put pipe in, cleaned out some drying beds. We were looking at getting a de-watering box, because that seemed to be the going thing, you know, and when I priced it, it was going to be about $83,500 of a capital asset. So I talked to an ex superintendent down in Lebanon, and we did a big plant expansion down there, and we put these big tubes in. And Lebanon at that time was about a 12 million gallon day plant, and we were pumping these deep de-watering tubes. And I said, hey, do you think this would be something we could use, instead of getting one of these de-watering boxes? He said, I don't see why not. So we went up to the, to the drying beds, make sure they still drain good, we got some de-watering tube, got all the pipeline done. Had to get us a building, and Ms. Danielle's been so good to every now and then tell me, I gotta slow down, that we're in a flood plain, and we have to pour footers, lay blocks, do different things, but she's been really good to make sure that we do it right the first time, and that's what we want to do. So far, we're doing this all in budget. We've got $14,273.97. All we like is the electrical and plumbing, so I hope the whole thing comes in at 15,000. If this works like we think it will, we'll pump to these bags, we think we can probably use one bag for like two months. The bags cost $413.89. So that's gonna be a lot cheaper than $83,000, plus we're doing it in budget, we don't have the capital asset out late on it. So we've got that going on, and that's kind of where this article come up, they're doing a case study. Once we get it going, they're gonna come back again, and we're gonna crunch the numbers, make sure things going up, we want it to. And we got a valve that went out down at the plant about two or three weeks ago. It's a six inch drain valve right at the bottom of the final diaphragm. And it's about 12 foot underground, and we dug down, like, there's part of excavators, Stephen is a great equipment operator. But getting down there, we found more pipeline we had going around, as we got down to the valve, we ended up, the tank is got flanked, it come in so tight, we couldn't get the excavator in. So we took the pick and shovel and a hammer drill, and we worked and we got that valve cleaned out. Now the thing is now, we got a drained tank. I hadn't been able to drain the tank, because it's been raining every day. But we're looking at, if we contracted that out, it would probably have been a $15,000 job. And we're looking at fixing ourselves about 2,000. So I guess what I'm saying is every department, including admin, I mean, I come down here, whether I have to talk to Scott for advice, or go to Julie or Danielle, we just want to thank everybody. Roger, Roger cut this guy from there, had to pour concrete, 65 bags of concrete, instead of getting a concrete truck. We doing everything in-house that we can, but we just want to thank everybody, we want to thank the council and the mayor. Because we know, y'all have to make a lot of decisions, and a lot of times they ain't popular. But we're trying to rebuild this infrastructure for the town, we're trying to do the best we can. And y'all have always given us what we needed, and I know you will continue to do that. So that's kind of my report, might've took me a little longer than I should have, but if y'all need anything, let me know.
That's great. Thanks, Steve. I just, I don't know if y'all noticed or not, but we're working on every angle, saving every dollar we can save, because we really got a lot of stuff, a lot of repairs that need to be done, and we're not gonna have the money to do.
Well, it shows.
We're trying. Mr. Jones, we're ready for your report, sir.
You let me go first, that they go safety money, and I'm gonna pull up here, you need to spend a whole lot.
You might want to cut that bill a little bit, dude.
It's not my bill. So as you all are aware, you have SWIG grant funds, which are state water infrastructure grant funds, which are part of the government's, one of the buckets of COVID money, as I'll refer to it, but they came down from the federal government to the state level. And this portion of the money runs through the state water infrastructure grant program. You put in for, to utilize your state water infrastructure grant money for water main replacements. And so we bid that job a few weeks ago, July 11th. There were two bidders, Isingard Construction Group and Hawkins and Price. We had set the project up as a base bid, and then an active alternate, gives you a little bit more control over how much money you do spend. The base bid portion of the project is for the, to replace the water line along carmac and then hill crest. And then there's an active alternate portion that does about another 800 feet, which is totally lost, which road we picked for the.
Smother.
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 Yep. So of those two bids, Isingard was the lower bidder. For the base bid, it was $1,1,729. That replaces approximately, a little more than 3,000 feet of water main. And then for the additive alternate, it was $404,789, which replaces another 1,260 feet of water main. That includes new service taps, tying everything over, repairing the road back with binder, not complete paving, because eventually you have to come back and do a sewer project to rehabilitate the sewer, to get rid of vinyl. But the total, total bid from Isingard is $1,406,518. I wrote a recommendation letter, and I did recommend to the city that I would award the entire project at that cost. It is about $200,000 more than what the engineer's estimate was, and we put that together last year. I will tell you that the way the SWIG program has worked, just right now, people are just starting to be able to get their projects out. I was telling the short and the less outside earlier, six weeks ago, I had contractors calling me asking when I was gonna have projects out on the street to bid, because they had crews that had no work to do. I called a contractor yesterday, a job that he had told me he was interested in bidding, hadn't taken plans on, and it bids next, was supposed to bid next week. And he said, in the time he had talked to me, six weeks ago, he had eight sets of plans on his desk of new jobs that had come out in the past six weeks to bid. So if this work is going to be done through a bid process by a contractor, I do not believe you'll get a better price than the one that you got a few weeks ago.
Y'all have any questions? Thank you, Mr. Jones. Another good thing that we found out today, just today, we will receive the grant of $137,000 for the lead service line inventory. So we were awarded that number, Scott's gonna go over all the figures, but we just got that awarded, what about sometime, sometime this afternoon? So that's gonna pay for that for us. Scott, you ready for your report?
Yes. So I would love to establish a capital investment fund for the quarter sewer, that we would save money, give everybody, allocate towards it. But here's why I don't think that's gonna be a feasible thing. That project that he just mentioned, that's $1.4 million, $634,000 of that will be paid by the grant. The rest of it comes out of our money. Okay? So that's $800,000. Then you got the project that you're gonna talk about in just a bit, is the bank erosion project, that's $2.4 billion, of which our share is about $834,000. South Partridge, we paid $100,000 of that, so that's $700,000 that we have to come up with. Then eventually, we're gonna get approval for the clean water loans and the drinking water lines, and we will have cash flow to do those. So we're gonna be close all the way around. Okay, so, but the only way to go about it is to get it approved and do it as we can. Won't be awarding, you know, $3.18 contracts, we'll have to break it down, in my opinion, into smaller contracts, so that we can make sure we can afford it as we go. And hopefully, Derek and his crews can continue to march and help us.
Save money and.
Yep, so, so that's why I'm all for saving money. It's a pleasure to do so. Right now, we're in the same interest that we get, actually, it's better than the local government investment pool, where we've got our works, where our money at right now, so it's a lot of it moving here and forward, so about the same from a general point of view. So having said that, that's where we're at. So having said that, that's where we're at with water sewer. So that's why I will monitor cash flow, always said cash flow will be the most important thing. Okay, good news is, did get a email, but not an official letter, from the resolution that you approved about the water sewer rate increase over the next five years, whenever you choose to implement that, that they would accept what we'd submit, what you'd submitted, or that you continue on processing our applications for the drinking water and clean water state revolving fund.
What's the date that we have to implement that by? Is there a certain date?
Five years from last meeting. Well, actually, it'll be longer than that.
Before it has to be implemented?
Before, before we finish the construction. We have to do it over the construction period. So there we get started, then we'll have to start thinking about it. I will be recommending it before we even get there, okay? I think. And what we're dealing with, as you just heard him say, the winning bid is one point four million. What he didn't say was, the bid that lost was over two million, almost, I think it was almost eight hundred million dollars more. So it will not get cheaper. It's gonna be more expensive. But we can do what we can do, and that's all we can do, and we got a good plan in place, and that's what we're trying to do. Okay. Wanted to kind of emphasize a few things for you. General fund cash, we have four point nine million plus in general funds. Street eight cash is two hundred and nine thousand, QI thirty-one, and water sewer fund cash is two point four million. Okay? The annualized profit and loss right now is a hundred and ninety-five. Just remember, let's say we finish Paul Avenue, whatever costs we have invested into that, that goes on the depreciation schedule and becomes amortized or depreciated over the life of that. So every time we do a project, we will have extra expenses, okay? And that goes into the regulatory profit on that. But we won't have a problem with that. I think it'll be our cash flow that we have to just closely monitor. And we got it, we got a handle on it. So all of our ratios are in good shape on that. Did want to show you just a little bit of this new financial system that we have now implemented, parts of general ledger purchasing accounts table. If you, pages that I want to highlight for you, so you can kind of have an idea. We have, I won't say an infinite number of options to give you reports, but it's not even close, the kind of information and data that we can provide to you really during the mid, in the middle of a meeting if we needed to. But what I wanted to really show you is, turn to page seven, and you can think about how you want to get this. Once again, any detailed item you want, we can pull up within minutes, unless in a meeting now, okay? So you see, this is just an example, I've got it highlighted, page seven. This is a summary of all funds, okay? Saving the revenue and expenditures. It just summarizes for each fund, kind of what month-to-date activity is, year-to-date activity. It gives you the broad picture, okay? Big picture of what's happening. The next page, page eight, it pulls out the line items. So you've been getting twenty-five pages. This summarizes by those major expense groups that we've got, so you can kind of see. For example, in general government there, the local tax revenues, licenses and permits. It summarizes the revenues. You can do it that way, or we can also break it down to what you had previously, which was each individual line. But I wanted you to see the opportunities that you have to request, so that I can make sure you have information so you know what, how we're doing. The last page is number eleven, it's on the back. Just kind of want to always keep this in front of you. The operating income for the month of July, sixteen thousand, or are you...
Is it page eleven?
Yeah, it's on the very back, very last page. Yeah, it's not, it's not numbered.
It's in there.
Yeah, okay. So this is what the state would be looking at, the utility board, okay? When they look at, are we making enough business profit in order to take care of, or run it as a business, okay? So you can see sixteen thousand dollars for the month of July, okay? So that's the key figure that we look at in addition to the cash flow. Now, Rusty indicated about the new pumps, we will have to do a budget amendment in the water sewer fund to increase that, because we're gonna spend the money that we've got in water sewer for the water lines and clean water lines. So we'll need to do a budget amendment. I think it's a two-month process, so. Okay. Questions? Please. We're in good shape. Water sewer fund, since we're doing new infrastructure, just have to pay attention to it. You're on top of it. On top of it. Do what we can do. Do what we need.
Thanks, Scott. Next item on the agenda is unfinished business. We're gonna go to the bank erosion project that we added to the agenda. That's, the reason I brought that up is on August twenty-third, the Corps of Engineers is coming down for us to sign the paperwork to get that project implemented. The work won't start until the twenty, twenty twenty-five, summer of twenty twenty-five, and it is quite a big sum. So I wanted to let you all know that this was coming up and see what your thoughts were. Still want to go forward, or what you want to do with it?
I don't say we have any choice, do we?
I mean, we can choose not to do it. I just, I can't tell you if the, if it's gonna, sewer plant's gonna fall in or not. I'm just saying, I just want you to know that we're getting ready to spend this money.
What's the total?
Seven...
That we're responsible for?
Eight hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars.
Out of general fund?
No, that's water sewer.
Oh, water sewer, okay.
And then South Carthage will be responsible for a hundred thousand of that, so about seven sixty-something.
Wait, now, South Carthage is responsible for how much?
Hundred thousand.
Even? Or just roughly?
Even.
Okay. What does that bring our, well, we've got it here, I guess, don't we? What does that bring water sewer down to?
One point eight, and then you got another six hundred thousand to spend for Carmack in addition to the grant that we got.
We're starting off at one point eight, though?
Sorry, two point four.
Okay, sorry, two point four.
They lost the, Carmack will be finished first, so you take eight hundred thousand off that. At least you have one point eight.
Yeah, one point six.
And take another seven hundred off of that.
For the bank erosion, seven sixty-four is what it ends up being? So we're down to eight thirty-six. But it's gotta get done. We don't have any choice.
I just suggest if we're gonna keep the waste water plant where it is now, and it's forty-six years old, so eventually, we're gonna have to do some improvement. We gotta fix that thing.
That's, that's the question.
We don't have an option. If we're just gonna leave and go somewhere else in a couple, two or three years, then you might take a chance. But if we're gonna stay there, and I think that's where it's gonna be for around time, I just think you got to fix it.
I just believe it's cheaper to stay there and fix it than to start over and run the lines and everything else.
It depends on who all puts in on that, though. Because at one time, we were talking about everybody pitching in and us not being all out the entire money. Where are we at with any of that? It's not gonna happen?
I don't believe it will, no.
We need to just move on and just fix what we got?
That's my opinion, but I wanted y'all to have a say in the matter, so.
Can the county put in anything of that, of the seven sixty-four? I'm just asking a question. We've got South Carthage putting in a hundred, who else?
The reason they're putting in a hundred is because they use twenty-five percent of our sewer plant. They're required to.
Who else? Does anybody else use it? I thought Gorman's pleased, so.
No, they don't. They, Gorman has her own plant.
Maybe what's South Carthage?
South Carthage has a twenty, is it twenty-five percent, Steve?
About thirty.
Thirty percent, so they're required for a percentage of all the...
County, county doesn't use it at all, so they're...
But it sounds like they're not putting in thirty percent of the money.
Well, there's a new contract out, and they, they, they said they could not afford to pay thirty percent anymore.
Tough, go borrow it.
What was the good chase, what contracts in place? Their maximum is a hundred thousand on capital assets. They still will pay whatever, based on our form, in the contract that's been in place since twenty fourteen and renewed just this month.
But they can afford a hundred thousand for this budget year? Why couldn't they pay the rest of it for the next budget year? We can't hold them to thirty percent? Can we hold them to thirty?
The contract's up. They had to have, they had, we were gonna negotiate a new contract. So, I mean, we can hold out for thirty percent. If they don't sign the contract, we get zero.
But we don't get that you-know-what either.
That is very true.
Yeah, where they gonna put it? They don't really have a choice, do they?
Yeah, they can go to Gorman's. I'm not saying they will, but I'm saying they can.
But they'd have to run all new lines over there too, wouldn't they?
We've seen that happen before with water companies, though.
I don't know the logistics, Jesse. I don't know if there's pipes there already, they just gotta turn on valves, or what they gotta do with that.
I was adding...
I don't know. I mean, I don't understand why it's coming across the river in the first place, but that's just me.
It's coming under the roof.
Yeah, I just understand, right. I just don't understand why that was done.
So do we need to pull the trigger on spending seven hundred and sixty-four thousand? I guess the question, we gonna just pull the trigger and just do it? Or are we gonna talk to them and see what the contract ends, the contract ends up being with them and see if we can't...
Well, that was the final negotiated contract.
That was it.
And that's...
Negotiated contract.
Oh. That was through the attorneys and everything, and their rates are increasing, is that correct?
Yes.
We increased their rates, so they'll pay more monthly, but it'll be a less of a capital outlay expense.
How much more?
Do you have that figured handy, Scott?
Or what that, that weights to?
Prior contract was based on whatever the rolling twelve-month average was for the operating cost, okay?
Okay.
So it generally averaged around thirty percent. So if we bought a capital asset in the clean water plant, sewer plant, they would pay whatever that percentage was under the old contract, okay? And now, this, the three hundred thousand, if we had kept it where it was gonna be, so we don't have it.
So had we done this maybe sooner, we could have held them to the thirty, huh? I mean, we can't go backwards, I'm just asking a question.
We're actually at the mercy of the engineers, because they're giving us the one point, whatever million dollars, the Corps of Engineers, so they could, it was supposed to have been started prior, but they just didn't fit it in, so.
They didn't, they didn't get the federal funding.
Yes.
That's why it was all by...
The budget wasn't allocated at the federal level, so that had to be pushed back. And the reason I bring that up is on the twenty-third, Congressman Rose and the Commandant from the Corps of Engineers are coming here to sign that, and I want to make sure y'all are, I don't want to be the one that makes that decision for this entire city.
Well, it's just frustrating, because, I mean, thirty percent would be almost two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and we're accepting a hundred thousand instead. So that's where I'm at, I'm frustrated by that. That's not good business.
We'll get around a hundred to a hundred and twenty thousand plus a fifteen percent margin on that.
With the increase, right. We'll get how much? How much you say?
It's fifteen percent.
Yeah, so it's about a hundred, a hundred and twenty, so it's, it's similar, but it's not quite as much. And it doesn't bankrupt the city of South Carthage.
So that would be how much revenue we lose if they went to Gorman's?
Sure. So we, when do we meet for the, like, is there a contract now, like, a new contract? Or you're saying that's getting ready to happen?
We've already negotiated the contract. It's with their attorneys, their...
We're just waiting.
Waiting for them to sign and send it back. The contract expired July one, was a ten-year contract.
We don't have a contract right now.
No, it's been negotiated. We agreed to operate off the old contract, though, too.
Okay, that's, okay.
We're not gonna turn off your sewer service.
Sure, yeah. Long as they keep paying.
They have.
They are.
Would it be wise to wait until that's official to pull the trigger on doing this? Or is it better just to go ahead? It sounds like we're gonna do it.
Why, I mean...
If you remember the meeting we had with Mr. Pickering and the other gentleman, if we approved for this to go, okay?
We can change.
We did, and something happens and it changes before they start. They said they could just take it and put it on the shelf, and they won't have to go through the two-year process that we've already gone through, and all the studies, environmentals and everything that's been going on. That if that happens, we needed to do that, we could say, hit it up on the shelf. But if we don't go for it, who knows? We'd have, probably have to start the whole process again, because it has to go...
We have to get into the approval phase in order to put it on the shelf and have it all approved.
I guess my, my concrete, I guess, question that makes my decision up is, is the, is the plant going to stay there indefinitely? Like, for a long, long time?
And as far as I know, that's where it's gonna be. I don't have any...
If we spend seven hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars, it needs to sit around there for fifty years.
And the approvals that Steve's making and saving the money, I mean, it just, we're taking care of ourselves. And that's what we have to do, we have to look out for the city of Carthage.
If it's sitting there, then I'll, I'll vote for it. If we're, if we're still looking at hoping somebody comes in and does what they say they're gonna do and...
Well, they were never, they weren't gonna move it anyway. They were gonna try and rebuild it right there. They were gonna rebuild it down where our plant is.
I had heard something, I'd heard about it moving.
Well, they were talking about putting it to landfill.
That's what I, yeah.
But it was gonna cost, um, fifteen thousand.
That's off the table.
Completely off the table.
Well, then we might as well just do it. I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna...
Now, if, even if, if it gets back on the table, it'll probably be built down there anyway.
Right. It's just they're not gonna, they'll put in for what we're getting ready to pay.
Well, no.
It would be very hard to get another discharge permit up in state, the EPA, they don't do that much anymore. So even if it, if it had moved to the landfill, they would still have to use our discharge from the end after the river there. If we moved it, everywhere's flood, flood plain down there. There's really no good alternative, I think, other than if we're going to the countywide, citywide, take our Carthage, we got a spot down there. If we need a little extra land down there, we'll try to get it. But we would approve for the town of Carthage, take care of town of Carthage. And that's...
Go ahead, Scott.
Not a risk of the Carthage, but I am listening to Smith County. This is a project for Smith County to take the lead on, okay? Because our plant, and why should the town of Carthage take all the sewage for the entire county cut off of Lane Street? Where Smith County has access to many different places that they can purchase for a permit along the river. Now, that is a citizen of Smith County also undertaking the town of Carthage. I can't see us leading that effort in the county.
We're not, we're not going to. And we're gonna take care of our citizens and our sewer plant, so I just want y'all to be aware. If y'all vote to do it, we'll do it. If you say no, we won't. I mean, because it's, this is a...
You ready to take a vote today?
I need to, because like I said...
I make a motion to approve it.
I'll second.
Okay, the roll call vote, please. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Knappel?
Yes.
Councilman Petty?
Yes.
All right. Thank y'all. Next item on the agenda is the second reading of the planning ordinance, P two zero two, four zero seven, one one dash two, is the rezoning of the Poindexter property on First Avenue from C one to C two.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next item on the agenda is discussion of resolution regarding citizens' concerns. You just wanted to put on here.
A lot of people are upset that they have to get on the agenda, what, twenty-four to forty-eight hours in advance to speak? When sometimes things come out, come up quickly.
When sometimes things come out, come up quickly. It's just something for us to talk about.
Wait, can you say come up quickly? What are you referring to?
Well, situations come up that they, you know, something, comes up, they didn't have forty-eight hours to get on the agenda. Twenty, I still think that, I don't say that, I think that we are choking the citizens of Carthage by not letting, allowing them two minutes to speak.
So we look at undoing, I guess would be the technical word for that. If we undid the resolution that we voted on, because we did vote for that.
Recede. Well, we're required to have, by the new governor's laws, we have to have a resolution in place that regards citizens' concerns. That's why we put that into place. But y'all can change it, whatever y'all, whatever y'all want to change it to, but we have to have a resolution.
So the council would want it to say something like, they don't have to do anything within twenty-four hours, but they get two minutes? Or do we want two minutes? Do we want, I've seen some that do three minutes.
Start out with two and see how it goes.
Well, we've done two. We've done two for a long time, and we've seen people kind of get rushed towards the end, so I think let them talk. Give them three minutes.
I'm fine with it.
Restrict them.
We're here to represent them.
And I voted for it, so I mean, I'm, I'm sitting here, I wish I would have had now, but I'd like to see that replaced with something along the lines of. I, I personally would like to say three minutes, allow them to speak. And just keep it simple. Let them talk.
How about if we do it this simple? Sign up when you step in, fifteen minutes before the meeting. You have three minutes to speak, and we'll use the total, you gotta get a total amount for the meeting time. That's in there. And you have to have a cap on that for the ordinance, or for, towards the governor, whatever you wanna call it. We got a total of thirty minutes we take up, so that gives you ten people for three minutes or whatever.
Sometimes if there's more people than that, though, so.
I mean, we.
I mean, I hate to give it an hour, but I'm, you know, maybe that doesn't use that often, but I don't think we need to cap it at thirty minutes, where we have some things that are.
Well, the maximum's an hour.
Is that according to the?
According to what the governor put out.
That's according to our resolution. So I think our resolution says the maximum time is generally an hour.
Well, that's what the, the governor's, whatever he put out, the guideline on it.
If he, let's verify that, just to make sure. Let's, we could, we could set it as an hour for now. Look into that if you will.
I think the statute says that you can set the maximum for it, and our resolution says the maximum.
Let's just get, I say, let's do.
I thought I read the governor's resolution.
Let's, let's do this. Let's have a resolution that says an hour for now. I mean, not technically for now, but an hour, and allows them three minutes each. They do need to sign in.
Beginning of the meeting?
Yes. That's just my opinion. If I get a second on that, I appreciate it.
Any discussion on that?
And leave it to.
I've got one question. So if they sign in, let's say at the beginning of the meeting, they all sit down, then all of a sudden they start talking, and someone just wants to step up and talk, or you allow them to talk, or you're gonna?
See, that's why I, you mentioned signing in at the, at the beginning.
I'm just using that for an example. I mean, I don't, it doesn't matter to me.
I think they need to be signed in in order to speak, but I don't think they necessarily have to. If they don't sign in at the beginning of the meeting, and then they have something they want to talk about to restrict them, I don't think.
So then we don't need to sign in, is what I'm saying.
No, I think they sign in. They can just walk up to the podium and sign in, and they're fine.
They have to sign in to be here anyway.
So people can come and go in the meeting. I think that they should sign in at the beginning of the meeting to keep a little bit of order.
Order, yes, because.
And if they don't, then they can't speak.
That's what I would think.
Remember how it used to be, I mean, it used to be chaos, what if they're late?
We don't want a four-hour meeting, can you?
No, and that's what, that's what you're gonna, well, I'm not saying that's what you're gonna run into, but you know, you open it up to an hour, three minutes.
We want somebody to be late to the meeting and not be able to speak too, though, maybe it could open up possibly to that. And we can always open it up in the meeting and say, you know, hey, we make a motion to let so-and-so speak.
So-and-so speak. But on, we, we made the decision.
Yeah, I think that's fair. I think then we say, if it's, don't need to restrict it based on who it is, it needs to be restricted based on.
Be fair across the board.
Needs to be fair across the board. Just saying that out loud. But I like that. I think three minutes, up to an hour, until you review that. Attorney Griffin.
Sure.
If there is no limit, then we need to change that.
To what?
I don't know yet.
Well, I mean, how much time do you want to allot? Well, I'm saying, I think an hour is ample time. That's thirty people.
I think an hour's enough.
Hours plenty, yeah.
Yeah, I think an hour would be the max.
If we see a problem, we can always.
Extend it, but I mean, if, if you get, it's a lot, that's.
That'd be thirty people at two minutes, but if we're pushing it to three, yeah, twenty people, three minutes. That is a lot.
It's a lot to go through, I mean, but if you, we need to set it.
And even in major issues, I haven't seen twenty people.
Sure.
Are still limited to topics that are on the agenda, not wide open.
Absolutely.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, we need to keep it kind of focused.
So I'd say three minutes up to an hour. They need to, they need to sign in.
Okay.
And then we can base, if they're late or something like that, we can make adjustments.
The other thing we need to consider too is, you know, how we get going, all of a sudden everybody's done talking, and we shut it down, and then someone comes in late. Are you gonna allow them to speak after the session is, I say, once citizens' concern is shut down, we don't let anyone else come forward.
That's what we've been following.
I agree with that. But who decides when the citizens' concern is, is over?
When the last speaker's there, when the hour's up.
So up to an hour, though. Yeah, once, once the hour's up, then yeah.
No, what I'm saying is if you got ten people sign up to speak, ten people speak, there's no sense in us sitting here idle for the next however many minutes.
Of course not, yeah.
So then we close citizens' concerns.
Sure. And if they're late at that point, though.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. When the last speaker that signed up speaks, we close it out and we move on to the agenda.
Yeah, I just don't want us, in full transparency, that's what we talked about already several times. I just don't want us to get in a situation where somebody gets up to speak that maybe somebody doesn't want to hear them speak. And then we are in that, you know, using that to silence people. I just don't want anybody be able to do that.
No, everybody should be able to speak for, now for three minutes, and say whatever they want, as long as it's pertaining to the agenda items.
And respectful.
Yes, and in a respectful manner.
They don't necessarily have to.
Professional. They need to be professional.
They don't, I mean, they can say whatever they want.
They can say whatever they want to. It's the First Amendment. We can't restrict them to.
But I mean, we, we appreciate it.
We appreciate it, but we, who, who gets to decide what's respectful and what's not? Then you get into, you know, playing.
I think we all deserve to be respected. We deserve to be respected, and we respect that.
Okay, let's do a roll call vote on that and see if everybody agrees.
Let's read over the amendment for the resolution.
So one hour maximum. Each person gets three minutes, and they're required to sign up at the beginning of the meeting.
Potentially to the agenda.
Potentially to the agenda.
Yeah, that stays the same. Yeah.
Vice Mayor Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Knappel?
Yes.
Councilman Petty?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is charitable contributions. Scott, you wanna cover that? We need to decide who we're giving what, how much we're giving.
Do we have to decide that tonight?
No, it's, it's just been, it's an ongoing thing. Y'all can wait till.
Hey, I made my motion last time, Steve. If he gets another one, I'll try again. I think we need to keep it exactly like we did last year, except we remove the water bills. That money can go back to the general fund. It's super simple.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
I have plenty.
That's what we're here for.
Just looking at how we are to take care of the citizens here, and that's my goal. I don't have an agenda in this. But I have been here, you're my fourth mayor, so I've been here a long time, and I've seen what council members have done to help those citizens in the community that need to step up. Now, we can't give food to a citizen. We can't pay utilities. We can't help them build a house. We can't provide prevention education so that the substance abuse problem that we have in the community gets better over the next generation. But we have nonprofits here that are doing all that for our citizens. And so I want to say I was one of those families. I was one of those kids. My dad was addicted to alcohol, and the community helped fill in the gaps for us. The Lions Club, all those civic organizations, charitable organizations that helped people have a step up. So there were five of us. And all five of us, because we had those gaps filled in, because we had those caring people in the community that wanted to help a little bit. We always had to move over our head and put it on our table, and all five of us were determined that we would help others. So not only did we become property owners, five people, even though we really struggled with my mom taking care of five of us. Five families has started being property owners, paying taxes, working for nonprofits, serving nonprofits. The nonprofits help those broken people in the family that the town of Carthage cannot. And with, we just got through COVID, everything has doubled in price, including just the place to live, groceries. And I don't see how we can, with good conscience, not at least help those nonprofits a little bit. We, UCHRA is well-funded, and they're gonna continue to pay water bills. But I'm not opposed to that either. I think that was a great thing to do last year. But I think there's a way in this, in the budget that we have now, in the, keeping it at thirty thousand, if that's what you wish. But I really think that we're doing a disservice to our citizens that are broken, that need to step up. If we don't, at least in some small way, and this is a really small way, to help those nonprofits continue to serve the people in our community. So that we, what, what I do, what Habitat for Humanity does, what the Help Center does, we're building strong families for the next generation. And that's the foundation of our city. Taxpayers that are on their feet, becoming property owners, taking care of their own children. And we have the safety net that other counties don't have. Believe me, they're calling me and asking me, how can we have what Smith County has? We have great nonprofits. We haven't ever had anybody come and ask for a donation that was so controversial that we had to turn them away, or we had to stop giving. That could happen, but I don't foresee that happening. But I think it's our duty to help those people in the community, and we can't do it directly. But we have wonderful nonprofits that work tirelessly, not only working to serve the people they serve, but working to raise funds. And the town of Carthage has always, even before I was on the council, and I've been on the council a long time. The council members, one council after another, saw fit to support in a small way. It's not a huge way. We're not taking a lot of the citizens' money. But we are providing for those nonprofits that directly feed and clothe and house our citizens. And it could change families for the future. Our foundation of town is the families. We need structure. We need water and sewer and all those things. But our families being stronger in this terrible economy is really important, more now than ever since I've been on the council. And we have a more solvent city budget than we've ever had before.
In the past, how much money did the city put in to pay for water bills?
What was it, ten thousand last year?
We allocated twelve thousand, and we sent ten.
Sent ten, but basically, I mean, the city's not really spending that money. The city's sending it over there, and they're sending it back to us. We're basically reinvesting in our own selves. It's going from the general fund to the UCHRA, back into the water fund. So we're investing in our own.
Go ahead. I don't want to interrupt.
Let Jesse go ahead and speak first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I mean, I've, I've been pretty clear on it from the beginning. It's just, I love our nonprofits. I agree. We've got some of the best around. I support them personally, most of them, and especially the ones that I'm deeply connected to. Because of my past and, you know, my family history and all of that stuff. And, and I believe that's what citizens do. Citizens, businesses, they support nonprofits in a city that are doing good work. And if it's a good nonprofit, if it's a good organization, and they receive funds, as well as doing their own fundraising. But it is not the government's job. Fundamentally, it's not the government's job to subsidize nonprofit organizations. It just shouldn't happen.
It's happening in the, I'm sorry, did I stop you?
I don't want to talk that much. I just, that's all I really wanted to say is that it's just not what's supposed to happen. Just because it's happening in other places.
It is happening in, in most other places. The city of Chattanooga has themselves, their, their city government has created every child initiative. Building and launching a mentor matchmaking hub, working with partners to establish a helpline. All this is for students. Providing trauma-informed training programs, setting up safe places, especially before and after school and during weekends. Extending hours and services at specific high demand community centers. So their programming is love and care and attention, someone to lean on, giving them food and shelter. Those are very basic needs, very basic needs. And I'm not, I'm not asking the town to give a lot, but we always have given something. Other towns are doing it on their own. We can't do that. We're not Chattanooga. But we can continue to give what we've given and not hurt the citizens or the town.
I need some sort of guidance on how.
I've got a motion, and I've got a second to keep it the same as last year, minus twelve thousand for the water bills, letting that go back to the general fund.
So in other words, you just take that out completely?
Just take it out completely, so that thirty technically would come down.
You don't think it's a good idea for us to reinvest into our own?
We said we were gonna do it for a year. If we wanna do it for longer, then I'm, I'm up for discussion with everybody else, but.
I, I think that program alone is basically, it's not costing the city any money. It's coming from the general fund, going out, going over to the water fund, and back into our coffers. But we're helping people in the process.
The twelve thousand is needed, because you said that we did ten thousand.
Well, yeah, we don't have to keep it at twelve. I mean, I would like to see something go that way, but I don't, Scott, what do you think about, would ten cover it?
Ten, we'd cover it. There's about seven hundred dollars left of that ten, but I didn't send the rest of it because there was some left in June.
Well, I, I amend my.
I didn't want it to be sent over there.
And then I would amend it then and say, keep it the same as last year, except ten thousand instead of twelve.
Do you want to rescind it?
I'll rescind it and do a new one, that it, it goes, so that would be a total of twenty-eight instead of thirty.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
That would be exactly the same as last year, minus two thousand dollars for the water bills. Or UCHRA, or if you want to say that.
If you need to be a second, I'll second. I appreciate that.
Okay. Any more discussion before we take a vote? Do a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor?
Dylan Martin?
Yeah, Vice Mayor Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Knappel?
No.
Councilman Petty?
Yes.
Okay, motion's approved. We're on the new business. The first item on the new business is bid approval for the water main replacement phase one. That's the one that Mr. Jones just came and talked to us about. All we're doing is approving the bid.
The one point four?
Yes, it's just approval of the bid.
Approval of spending the money or approving that? We heard that it's one point four.
I mean, it's both about the same. I mean, you, you, the bid is one point four million, and you, I mean, that's the first.
We say yes, it gets paid.
Yes, we start the project in October. The water line gets put in.
I'd like the motion to approve it.
Second for discussion.
Okay, discussion?
Is there any way that we can do that project in-house?
Well, we, we can do, we can do that, and we could do a lot more projects, but I require more employees. Because of the simple fact that, I mean, you're talking about a thousand.
I'm with you.
You know, and, and we only have, use four, and then, like, they had to come off of that data to read meters. You're still doing their day-to-day operations. We're just saving money in different areas than we can. I don't think.
I just.
Just remember this, that this money, the six hundred and thirty-four thousand left, we can't use our people to spend that money.
Right.
It's gotta be the contract.
That portion of it.
They could technically do that much of the work, and then we could take over.
I don't know if you can cross projects like that or not.
They wouldn't do that. We'd like to finish that.
I'm just brainstorming here.
I mean, I, I like that idea. I would rather hire the people and do it ourselves. I mean, we would save money eventually on all that. I mean, I'd like to hire three or four more people for the water department, and boom, they could be putting water lines in every day. But that's something we have to talk about and adjust. I mean. Because you're still spending money, but you won't be spending as much. You saw the difference in the savings of what's, what we got here. I mean, that's just on four hundred feet.
That's what I'm thinking. I'm just talking out loud.
And we, I mean, they could do the sewer lines too. I mean, they, they can do all the projects, but they don't have.
Take that on.
But we don't have enough manpower.
But they, but they want to take that on.
Well, I mean, they're willing to. I mean, I don't think anybody wants to add that much work.
How many more you think you need?
At least three more.
Now, I wanna keep, also wanna let you know that we have a job open now. We want to add one applicant, so that may be a problem.
For the.
Streets Department, so it may be a problem plating people. I thought about maybe hiring temporaries, but you, I mean, we've looked, we're looking at a lot of different angles here, guys, to, to try and make this work because every water line, every sewer line in the city has to be replaced.
Right.
I mean, they're, they're bad.
Question is, are we gonna, do we want to pull the trigger on putting it out to, I guess it wouldn't be out to be.
You already approved the bid.
No, I mean, a position recommendation, or a position, we call it, um.
Job opening?
Job opening, three job openings to help with the water, uh, water department, water shore.
That's a separate issue, right now we got to decide whether we're gonna accept the federal money.
Yes, that's what I'm saying. We have to, this is six hundred and thirty thousand dollars that's been allotted to this project.
But it can be something we could look forward to beyond this one point four.
Right, we can, if we, if we, if we approve this project, before we bid in the next project, y'all can come together and we can have a workshop on it and say, hey, would the water guys, the street guys come and say, if we had this many people.
I don't think you even need a workshop, you just said three, I mean, that's.
Well, I think we need to discuss it a little more because when you got, we gotta figure out how much the wages are gonna be, the insurance and all that stuff, and what the cost effectiveness is. You see what I'm saying? It may be, it may not be cost effective, it may end up being more money.
Let's do that later.
Well, you ain't gonna find too many people that are gonna work seasonals to do that. You can't find them to work full-time, so. Yeah, but you can't even find them to full, work full-time, so I, definitely not gonna have a seasonal.
I'm just saying throw it out there and, and see if somebody comes up and.
But let's, but let's, let's get a plan together, let's not just throw it out there and say we need three people, then all of a sudden they say we want to hire three people, we don't have the money to hire three people.
Okay.
See what I'm saying, let's get a plan together before we go that far, but I'm with you, I want to do it in-house and get it all done, we got the equipment, we got the capability.
Let's do a workshop before, well, it wouldn't be for next meeting, because we're.
Well, we're gonna be here early anyway, so, I mean.
If we have extra time, if we can just do that.
Add that on to.
I don't know if we'll have extra time in that hour, but we could. If not, you know, some special call or some kind of workshop.
Just remember when you're thinking through this before that being, whenever you add employees, you're adding fixed costs indefinitely.
Yep.
Unless you, and that's one of the things you have to think about.
Well, we can decide what kind of employees they want to be, they could be full-time employees with no benefits, or thirty-two-hour employees, or whatever, that way they're not full-time, we fired three part-time.
And you're, and you're invited to the workshop.
More information, you got an album where you can think about it.
That's right.
Okay, so, let's go back to the topic at hand, the bid approval of water main replacement phase one.
We got first and a second.
First and a second, any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Knappel?
Yes.
Councilman Petty?
Yes.
Hey, the next item on the agenda is a cashier position recommendation for hire.
First, I want to make sure we want to respect confidentiality until the vote's taken and then we want, uh, candidates chosen for them to notify their employer at their discretion.
Okay.
So that's why I just want to maintain, so I'll ask the candidate to stand. And we had nineteen applications, five of those met the criteria. Uh, we interviewed five, three of us interviewed the five, had our independent scoring, and, uh, the candidate presented here had far exceeded the other four candidates, uh, in terms of our numeric rate that we did. And just so you know, it was a working interview, not only was it just discussion, but they had to show me that they knew how to do certain things that we didn't need to spend time training, okay, so, um, this is my recommendation to the mayor and to the council. This person is my recommendation.
So are we just not gonna go with that and reapply, or what is the thought here?
I'll make motion to.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Next item on the agenda is a request for purchase of security cameras for Spring Street and industrial courts, the new things. Uh, I need just to have permission to, like I said, bid it out and, uh, apply for the grant, that's all I'm asking, I'm not asking to spend any money right now, just permission to go ahead and get them installed, or get them, the bids to get them installed.
Motion to. You go ahead and I'll say.
Any, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Last item on the agenda is discussion about adding lights to the pickleball courts.
Uh, I would like to make the motion that we discussed putting lights at the pickleball court.
Okay, discussion.
I'd like to suspend Robert Drews for a minute.
Go ahead. Wait, you have to.
I think we got a vote on that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Everything's going so smoothly.
Like, we're on discussion, everybody.
Okay. Rescind your first motion. Rescind your first motion.
Alright, I'll rescind it.
Now make the motion to suspend.
Motion to suspend Robert Drews.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, if we do it, oh, I've had a lot of people, and they're getting used like crazy, it surprised me. Uh, but we've got a lot of people that are using those courts and they, a lot of them have come to me and requested lights. That being said, I think we need to have a public hearing from the local residents. Go ahead.
Don't go ahead, I'm just asking.
And, uh, if we do it, we want those that are so directional, and then on the backdrop, so to speak, if that's the right word to use, we put some of that netting like we have around the pole that will help block.
What do you call them, the backdrop, the back towards the houses?
Yes.
So you want it all, we can put it all the way around the whole courts, it's not a problem, we're gonna put it on the football side because we've had some issues already where some things have been going on on those courts that shouldn't have been going on there, but we've got that rectified, so we're gonna put some stuff there.
Okay.
Um, the, 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 go ahead, Jesse, you're next.
I don't think we need to put lots there.
Well, the, the thing I was gonna say about that is.
Can I tell you why?
Well, the park closes at dusk.
I was gonna say, it's the same, we discussed this for the, for Spring Street, because we were talking about putting lots there, and we close it at dark, and so nobody's supposed to be there anyway, so there's, all we're doing is encouraging people to be there when they're not supposed to be.
My thought would be, my thought would be put it on a timer and we'll figure out what times to shut it off. You know, summertime, you probably, it's nine o'clock, wintertime.
Well, it just depends, I mean, wintertime, it gets dark at four o'clock in the afternoon.
I know it.
So, I mean, they may.
At the most, six o'clock in the winter, anyway, that's just my ideas, so.
I mean, I, I think that if we do that, we'd have to change the ordinances for the parks, and I think the biggest concern would be the law enforcement deal with that because you've got people there in the park and it's like, well, the lights are here, it's two o'clock in the morning, I'm playing.
It's dark over here in the.
Yeah.
Under the things and there's, you know.
And I'm playing pickleball, well, it's two o'clock in the morning, the lights are here.
Definitely making parks around that for enforcement. It's a reasonable.
I'm not, I'm not against it, I mean, I want people, but we, maybe we can find a location somewhere in the city, another lot that we have, that we could maybe do a nighttime court or something.
Also, houses.
Right behind.
Yeah, that's.
That's why I wanted a public hearing.
I don't think they're gonna like that, but I also think that we're opening ourselves up to kids or other people doing things over here where there's no light.
The fairies stuff, the set of good stuff.
You guys not being able to be there, I think it just needs to be texted out.
Any other discussions? Okay, that's the last item.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank y'all.